This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on Acting City Clerk Jenny Shaver for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles.
Here.
Councilman Echols.
Here.
Worthy.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Billingsley.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
And Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present. The meeting is open for business. Council President Williams will bring our invocation this morning. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here today. Lord God, we thank you for all in attendance. Father, we ask that you continue to bless us and keep us, Father God. Lord God, grow our hearts and minds that we will be in greater service and greater empathy, Father God. And through it all, Father, we will continue to give you the glory, the honor, and the praise for it's in Jesus' name we ask it all. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move on with the agenda, I would like for each of us to take the opportunity to observe a moment of silence for our dear friend and colleague, Mr. Mike McCain and his passing. Thank you. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on September 22nd.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of September 18th through the 24th.
So moved. Tekken.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Proclamations, Mayor.
I have two today. The first one I'd like to ask Ms. Casey Ramsey to come up. The first one is, whereas fighting fires is one of the most hazardous professions requiring physical strength, stamina, extensive training, courage, and selfless concern for the wildfire of our citizens, in addition to their daily service to communities firefighters throughout the state and across the nation, have joined the Muscular Dystrophy Association for the past 60 years in the fight against neuromuscular diseases. Gadsden firefighters have partnered with the Muscular Dystrophy Association year through the Field the Boot Campaign for MDA. Muscular Dystrophy Association is extremely grateful to the City of Gadsden for their support and dedication. Funds collected by the City of Gadsden firefighters assist MDA in providing medical services at local clinics, summer camp, research grants, support groups, and public education seminars at no cost to local children and families. In honor of these efforts for the Gadsden firefighters, the Muscular Dystrophy Association is sponsoring Gadsden Firefighter Appreciation Month. It is appropriate for all citizens to join the Muscular Dystrophy Association in this tribute to our firefighters. Therefore, be it resolved, I assure you in the Mayor of the City of Gadsden, the Gadsden City Council do hereby proclaim October 2015 as Gadsden Firefighter Appreciation Month in the City of Gadsden and commend the Gadsden firefighters for their efforts on behalf of the Muscular Dystrophy Association.
Well, good morning, everyone. I did just want to take a quick moment just to thank the Gadsden firefighters so much for their support to the Muscular Dystrophy Association and the long tradition that firefighters have of supporting MDA. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank the Gadsden community for the continuous support and dedication to the Muscular Dystrophy Association. We hope to be able to continue to work with all of you in the future, and please know what a difference your community is making. Thank you again.
I want to let Chief Carroll say a few words. Best fire chief in the U.S.
What does he want now? Again, every time that we are participating in these kind of charitable organizations, it's because of you and the Mayor that allows us to go out and raise these funds for these charities. And we feel like all the charities that we're involved in are very important. We do the Muscular Dystrophy, and we think that's one of the most... If you've never been to a camp where MDA patients are the small children and seen the joy on their face, to be able to participate and act like normal children, it really would break your heart if you ever get to see that, and you'll know what a joy it is for them to be able to go to that camp. Again, I appreciate the support that the Mayor's given us to allow us to do this and y'all's support in order for us to continue to raise funds for the Muscular Dystrophy. Thank you very much.
The second one is Ms. Susan Shipman, Executive Director of Second Chance, Inc. Is she here? Whereas let it be known that the City of Gadsden, Alabama acknowledges the prevalence of domestic violence in this city and in all its districts. Domestic violence is a crime that will be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law in the City of Gadsden. The city does assist victims of domestic violence by supporting Second Chance through promoting its shelter, outreach, court advocacy, transitional housing, educational, and prevention programs. Second Chance is recognized for its work in providing safe shelter, supportive services for domestic violence victims fleeing abusive situations in the Gadsden city. Whereas the City of Gadsden resolves to reduce the incidence of domestic violence by promoting awareness of the issues and availability of safe shelter and services provided by Second Chance. Therefore, be it resolved that I assure you in the Mayor of the City of Gadsden do hereby proclaim October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Gadsden and be promoted throughout the city.
Thank you, Mayor. Unfinished business. Item number 8A is an ordinance adopting fiscal year 2016 budgets. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading and approves the following budgets. The general fund budget of $49,180,395. Special revenue funds of $7,816,876. A debt service fund of $6,626,175. Enterprise and internal service funds of $11,998,752. And a capital projects fund of $8,900,000. The proposed general fund budgets that all entitle full-time employees shall receive a two-step increase, which is 2.5%. All non-full-time and part-time employees shall receive a 50 cent per hour increase. What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to approve the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no. Motion carries to adopt.
Item number 8B is an ordinance assenting to annexation of property to the City of Gadsden. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. Richard and Grace Lehman have requested their property located on Camden Cove Court be annexed in the city. The Engineering Department has recommended approval. What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
It'll be an area that's in my district.
That's why I helped you out there.
You're growing that voter base. Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 8C is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1001 Avenue G in District 3, New Life Family Worship and Tanya Latham being the last known owners. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on August 25th. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 8D. The nuisances on property located at 812 South 12th Street have been abated by the owner, therefore no action by the council is needed. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1609 Murray Drive in District 1, Billy Wise being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in June of 2014. There've been no improvements to the property. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 810 East Broad Street in District 2, Jose Flores being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Mr. Flores, if you'll state your name and address, please.
Jose Flores. Address is 810 East Broad Street.
Okay.
The one that is in question. I know that the building is in rough condition right now. I understand that it's a bit of an eyesore, but I have been actively working on doing repairs as far as...I want to put a business there. So I've already done the demographics report, and I've been in touch with JD or been talking to JD Johnson from RX Laundry. His company's based out of Atlanta, but he's actually from Pelham, Alabama. So what I want to do is put a coin-operated laundromat. I've already got my business plan, and I'm currently seeking financing, which of course for me, it's not an easy thing. I'm also in touch with the Business Outreach or Veterans Business Outreach Center, Brent Peacock, and also talking to him to try and get financing through the SBA as well, because I am a veteran, so there's some programs there that are available to me. And I have talked or been in touch with the Building Department a few times in talking to them about getting this matter resolved. But the building needs a lot of repairs. I don't argue that. So I'm going to have to look for a substantial loan amount, which is not easy. I can't...this is something that's not going to happen from one day to the next. So I do have and I can furnish all the paperwork and show proof that I have been working on this. So I got the letter to show up here in front of you all, so that's why I'm here, to let everyone know that I am actively working on doing something with the property. I'm not just letting it go.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Flores. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves commercial property at the intersection of Hope Street and East Broad. We started our nuisance process in July of 2014. According to the pictures, there have been no improvements to the property. There are no permits to improve. Councilwoman Toles can explain the abandoned vehicle parked out front. She seems to be the most expert in this field.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move that we abate the nuisance.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Mr. Flores, we hear you loud and clear, but we have to move forward with the resolution. If you by chance are able to secure the necessary financing to begin to bring the building up to code and make a substantial change in terms of its state, I want to encourage you to work with Mr. Harbison. And he would be...we're really not interested in tearing down a building if it can be maintained. So if you get to the point of being able to move forward, we would, you know, we'd be more than willing to work with you, but we do have to move forward with this resolution today. It's hard for us to tell. Again, that's a conversation you'd have to have...once you've secured the necessary financing to move forward and begin to make some significant progress, you'd have to have that conversation with Mr. Harbison, and he can help you from that standpoint. So again, if you'll touch base with him and stay in contact with the Building Department, if you're making progress, they'll work with you. Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1516 Hill Avenue in District 3, Aberlardo Perez being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Mr. President, you skipped one.
Yeah.
Number 11.
Apologize. Okay. All right, so our next public hearing is actually a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1329 Hill Avenue in District 3, Tuscaloosa LLC and Mutual Savings Credit Union being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started our case in January of 2014. There've been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1516 Hill Avenue in District 3, Aberlardo Perez being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started our case in July of last year. There've been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The nuisances on property at 614 Mallory Street have been abated by the owner, therefore no action by the council is needed. Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 304 Lugenia Drive in District 7, Robert Mark Dougherty and Countrywide Home Loans, Inc., assigned to BAC Home Loans Servicing LP, assigned again to Green Tree Servicing LLC being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we've been working this case for a couple of years with two different owners. We actually had a public hearing several months ago. In the meantime, Fannie Mae had foreclosed on the property. We've dealt with the new owner. They have made some improvements to the exterior of the property. They got a building permit in March of this year. The work has seemed to have stopped over the last couple of months. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1317 Tuscaloosa Avenue in District 7, the State of Alabama, and Lula Kate Dodd care of Walter Rice being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in January of 2014. There've been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt their resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Items number 16 through 19 are public hearings relative to resolutions assessing nuisance abatement liens against property. This is for demolition that has already been performed, and we have four locations. I'm going to read the addresses and names, and anyone who wishes to speak about any of these may come forward. 1106 Vincent Avenue, District 1, $3,041, State of Alabama and Royce Chambers. 1340 Stillman Avenue in District 2, $3,706.40, State of Alabama and Equity Trust Company doing business as Sterling Trust for the benefit of Wanda Erickson IRA. Number 8, Winona Avenue, District 6, $3,501.40, State of Alabama, State of Margaret Ashley, and City Financial Corporation, LLC. 3322 Williams Avenue, District 7, $2,485.92, State of Alabama and Greg Bailey. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt all four resolutions.
So moved.
Aye.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt all four resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 20 is a resolution awarding bid number 3297 for construction of Nakalula Falls Park walking path paving project. The Engineering Department has recommended awarding the bid to J&amp;D Enterprises, and the amount is $66,465. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt their resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 21 is a resolution appointing members to the Electrical Affairs Committee. This appoints Chuck Bishers for a term expiring June 28, 2016, and Kenneth Turner for a term expiring June 28, 2018. It also reappoints Jay Morgan for a term expiring June 28, 2016, Jeff Phillips for a term expiring on June 28, 2017, and Tom McElrath and Ray Coleman for terms expiring June 28, 2019. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt these resolutions.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 22 is a resolution authorizing easement to Alabama Power Company. This grants an access and utility easement for service installation at the Couso Riverfront Park. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business? Is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one item. It's a request from the Parks and Recreation Department, and I've asked for unanimous consent. This is where a Bass tournament will be going on this weekend, and it will be budgeted at $500. So I ask for unanimous consent.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution as new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, permission is granted.
I move for adoption.
Aye.
Any discussion?
I believe this is a Fisher tournament that would include junior and senior high school students, so it will be this weekend. In fact, there's a lot of activities going on this weekend, but this will be a Bass Federation Incorporated sponsored tournament.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a couple. I have a request from the Mayor's Office, a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding what the City of Boa has to accept prisoners from the City of Gadsden, asking for unanimous consent.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to consider the resolution as an item of new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, permission is granted.
Move for adoption, please.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is where we're...back a couple of months ago, we got an ultimatum from the County Commission to either take their offer, which was ridiculous for us to keep our prisoners there, to use that we didn't need all the space, and they was wanting to charge us for...I think the contract was for $900,000 or $980,000. And so we tried to work out an agreement with them, and we couldn't, so now we're taking them to two different cities here, and we're going to save the taxpayers of the City of Gadsden probably $500,000. And I don't think it's the citizens of Gadsden would like it if we was trying to help the Edgewall County Commission fund their budget. They're just trying to help balance... They're just trying to help balance their budgets on the back of the city employ, the citizens of Gaston, and I don't think that they like that. And that's why we took their ultimatum, ultimatum, so we're leaving them.
This is, uh, the Boa asked resolution of being to accept our female prisoners.
Correct.
At a cost of $50 a day? I believe that's right. I had two different ones, so.
Is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I have one more. Mr. President is asking for unanimous consent, authorizing memorandum of understanding with the city of Attala to accept our prisoners from the city of Gaston.
Second.
These will be our male prisoners.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to consider the item as new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, permission is granted.
Uh, move for adoption, please.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yeah, this, this is, uh, both of them are working with us. We're glad that somebody stepped up and offered us some other solutions instead of paying for beds we don't use, and we think this is going to work out really well, so we appreciate their cooperating with us to try to help us out.
You know, Mayor, it's a shame that they have that big old jail up there and that nice facilities up there, and we couldn't get them to work with us.
Well, y'all know how I stand. I really wanted our own jail, but I guess that's the second best thing. This is saving the city about half a million dollars a year, hopefully, somewhere along there.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a request from the engineering department for, uh, a cooperative agreement with the city of Gaston and surrounding municipalities about stormwater monitoring.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the item as new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, permission is granted.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is an agreement between most of the cities that surround Gaston, and they all will pay a portion of this monitoring, the water, runoff water for the city and the county and all of that, so it's, it's just something the federal government is making us do, and everybody's playing their fair share of it.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business? Department reports, committees, boards?
Good morning. Yes, I just had one quick announcement. Like Dr. Toad said, this will be a busy weekend, this weekend. And along with the activities this weekend, we have the Rock the River Run that our Parks and Records is sponsored with, with the Gaston Runners Club. So be advised if you're downtown, the roads will be closed for about 30, 45 minutes. The run starts at 7:00 PM, 7:00 AM, so just be advised of that. And also, we have a new concert series that we're starting this weekend also. We're doing Jazz in the Park, which will start Sunday from 6:00 to 9:00 at the amphitheater, and our guest this weekend will be James Spargans and the Rhythm Band, and it's a group along with Majesty Smooth Jazz, the City of Gaston Parks and Rec Department, DGI, the Tourism Department, and county commissioners Carolyn Park and Tim Choak that helped sponsor this event, so if you get a chance, come out Sunday at 6 o'clock from 6:00 to 9:00 at the amphitheater. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Courtney. I think that'll, I think that's going to be a very good event, and hopefully it's the beginning of something significant in the city. Okay? Now we're down to remarks by the mayor and council. Councilman Reed, would you like to start?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Cannon?
Thank you. I just want to remind everybody that Friday's Gaston City is Titan's homecoming. The, uh, the roads will be blocked off from 12 o'clock Friday until Saturday morning about 8:30 to after the run. They'll all be closed until then for the parade and first Friday that night, and also the run. As soon as the run's over, we'll open them back up. That's all we got.
Councilman Billis?
Yes, I'd like to remind people that these prisoners we're moving are misdemeanor prisoners now. They're not felonies or anything like that, so we're, we're not going to inundate anybody with hardened criminals, so it's, it's a plus-plus for the city of Gaston. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Worthy?
Yes, I just want to announce my commitment to meeting Thursday at Calver, the first, from 5:30 to 6:30. And also, I normally don't talk about my kids, but I'm going to talk about my oldest son. He got a letter yesterday from the President of the United States congratulating him on his recent graduating from college, so I just wanted to give a shout out to my son. Thank you, thank you.
Councilwoman Toad?
I don't have anything.
What? Mayor?
Mayor, you got the call.
Yeah, I, I just want to, you know, Facebook is alive and well, and everything on there is not true that I've ever seen. But anyway, there's a lot of conversation on, and we were going over the budget, we got the budget passed, and last week Councilman Worthy had some problems with the budget, which is fine, that's his prerogative to do that. One thing was about the retirees not getting a raise, so let me explain that to everybody before they know. We cannot give raises to the retirees without the state legislature passes a bill for raises, and they always leave it up to the cities and counties to pass it along. Therefore, when they send it to us, they're not brave enough to say give it or don't give it, they let us decide. And we have, uh, we've done that, uh, just, I think we've raised, uh, the insurance three times since 1992, three times. You know, so it's not like we have anything against the retirees or anybody else, but you have a retirement rate the city pays, and for each employment's, each employee's check, it has been over 20%, the rate has, in the last nine years. It was closer to 26 or 7 when I first got in office, the highest in the state. Now we're down to 20, and it's the second highest, but that means for every check that somebody gets every Friday, we pay, the city pays 20% into their state retirement. And what that does, it guarantees when they do retire that they'll have a check, if we wouldn't, uh, didn't have the financial means to do that. Also, uh, you know, it's, uh, just like mobile, I'll get to that in a minute, I got too much stuff here to keep up with. But anyway, I'm going back to, uh, you know, the comments by the councilman, he said he was, didn't understand some of it, felt like there was some things hidden or something along that line. You know, we meet with the council one at a time after working on the budget about three months, go over everything, ask for any question we can, and they have three weeks or two weeks to come back and ask for any question, we give them a copy of it. And I know it is confusing, it's confusing to me sometimes, but still, everything we do is above board. We've had nine budgets, our audit passes every year, we've never had any problems with that. This is the 10th budget we, we're giving right now, and, uh, you know, there's no hidden agendas, so it's, uh, it is what it is. And what you hear out on the street, or what you see on Facebook, I'm telling you, they never know what they're talking about. They have actually no clue, is we have some, anyway. Going on, the city's retirement rate right now is 20.74, and the total payments are $5,598,000, $5,598,103, and that's what we pay to the employee retirement system every year. And the city's cost totally is $4 million. The employees, uh, they pay a percentage of that, which is not a lot. It's less, I don't have the exact number there, but anyway, payments were made to retirees in 2014, $2 a month for each year of service for three, or $300, which year was greater. This one-time lump sum payment, $239,513, it causes our retirement rate to go up, and the more the retirement rate goes up, that's another expense. But like I said, we've given raises, uh, nine out of 10 budgets. Before the change in the retirement ordinance, the liability was $110 million, and we've made some changes along, the councils have all been good to work with, including this one, and things we had to do, because when you go bankrupt, there is no retirement, none. And some people say, well, so-and-so said, I don't care what they said, Carl Pritchard, Alabama, or, uh, California, some city in California, when the retirement rate, when you go bankrupt, there's no money ever. I think in Pritchard, they offered them half their retirement check, and they declined it, so they got nothing. So, you know, if we don't watch the money, and I know it can be very complicated, but if we don't watch the money, we won't have a city. We pay 80% of the active employee insurance and 85% of the retirees' insurance. I doubt there's very many cities that even do that. We have not cut services, we've not laid off, we've given the raises in the budget, nine out of 10 budgets, I said. 24 years, it's only gone up three times. We had 80 policemen when I got here, we're now a little over 100. We've got six new ones coming on here pretty quick, the fire chief, I mean, the police chief tells me. Built a new fire station at the airport. I won't even go into all the projects we've done here, and we've done it as we, we worked along. Also, I've got some other information here. The average, total salary and benefits for the police department is $8,997,000. Total salary and benefits for the fire department, $8,869,000. I'm glad we've had the money to pay it, I don't begrudge it. We, we have the best public safety, I think, in, in the state around here with the fire department and the police department. You know, the policeman, the average salary at being 70, and I'm glad we're doing this, I was all for this, some early on to park cars, but I'm, I'm not for that, they get to drive their cars home. I'm glad they can, we want them in the neighborhoods. But they don't have a car payment, they don't have any maintenance, they don't have any gas, they don't have to pay for tires, they don't have to pay any insurance, so that's a pretty good deal to me. I know everybody always wants more money, but that's the way it is, but I'm proud of the police and fire, they're well-trained, we got, we got a good group, and they do outstanding job, you just won't believe all the stuff they have to put up with, especially in today's times. And some people can work, you know, some people like in the fire department, they work 24 hours, a lot of them do, and they can be off two days, they're trained medics, most of them, or they're in training, and they can work another job with another fire department or ambulance company. I'm proud they can do that. I've been working two jobs since I was in my twenties, except for this one. This is like three. But anyway, the other thing I wanted to say was, I went through and got the averages in all the departments. The Public Works, that number of full-time positions, 71, average cost per employee salary and benefits, uh, is, we pay 49, $49,646, almost $50,000. In Parks and Rec, we got 51 full-time people, and average cost salary and benefits, $51,405. In City Hall, we have 48 people, the average cost per employee salary and benefits is $74,000. But you know what? A lot of these people have college degrees, they have experience in financial, in business, they, they, you know, attorneys, bookkeepers, I mean, there's a lot of issues for the difference in pay, but it ain't all that much. This year, everybody is getting a raise except the seasonal people, which is mostly high school kids and college kids that we hire in the summer, they're $7.75, which is more minimum wage, and that's like weed eating and grass cutting, stuff like that, it helps them go into school. But, uh, you know, the trolley drivers are getting a raise, I think they'll be right at $10, I believe it's $9.75. The part-time year-round is getting a raise, so anytime somebody tells you, uh, you know, considering this is the worst recession since the 30s, I think we've come a long way with positive improvements, we try our best to take care of the citizens who pay the taxes as well as our employees, and we will continue to deliver the services. And all this was accomplished by the mayor and the council working together. And I found this out, I didn't know it was this low, this is the best news yet. We owed 80 million when we got here, as of today, uh, we owe 55 million. And in nine years, I think all that, and it's because of the people and the council that's up here working, uh, in, in all the departments, we've been able to do a lot of things. Mobile, they have a $130 million budget, and they're giving it to and a high percent raise, and that's what we're getting. So if you're hearing that our employees are getting treated bad, or the citizens not getting services, that ain't true.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to...
I wasn't going to say anything, but Mr. Mayor, I didn't say you was trying to hide anything. I just said, no, I did not. I said I wanted an itemized budget, that's what I asked for, okay?
That's what we...
And they, uh, and from, I didn't say anything about the retirees not getting a raise, I said the insurance was going up, and I thought we could eat that, we could absorb that, it's only like 80-some thousand dollars.
If the state legislature doesn't pass the bill, we can't give a raise to retirees.
I didn't say a raise, I'm talking about the insurance.
But a raise offsets the insurance.
All right, that's it.
Thank you. So just, just a couple of things, I, I do want to, um, I do want to, again, recognize Mike McCain. Very difficult for me. Mike was a dear friend of mine, Mike was a friend of many, to be quite honest, so I can't claim to be exclusive in that, but he was a genuinely good person. It's not every day you come across a genuinely good person, but Mike was that. I can remember, um, before getting into politics, I can remember interviewing Mike for a television show for two hours, and Mike did half of the interview in Spanish and the other half in English. Mike was just that kind of person. He was very, very accomplished. Many people don't realize the huge void that he leaves in, um, in this city's industrial recruitment struc- structure, uh, but he will be missed for sure. Many folks also don't realize his, how well credentialed Mike was. We remember Mike as the executive director of the IDA, tasked with recruiting industry for the city of Gaston. What many people don't realize and know is that he worked for Governor, former Governor George Wallace as the assistant director of, uh, of, uh, the Alabama Development Office, or, or ADO, um, which helped him to, to establish himself as someone who was in the know at the state level, which consequently helped this city in, uh, in recruiting scenarios. Nobody was better at packaging the city in a positive light to industry, even when our labor culture was not very pretty. He, he packaged us well, and he has recruited a generation of industry for this area, and, and Mike will be missed. Mike, Mike will definitely be missed, and, you know, we, our heart, our hearts, minds, and prayers go out to his family. Try to move on to something brighter. I, I had the, I had the privilege of attending, um, last week, I was in Orlando and had a chance to attend a national, um, Black MBA Association event. And, um, and I, I was very impressed, and I bring that back to this meeting because of the challenge I want to push towards our young people. There are some sharp, very sharp, very talented young people out there that are competing, not just within our city, but they're competing internationally, and they're making it tough. It's not like what it used to be, where you could know someone, or know a former high school principal, or teacher, or coach, and, and bank on that getting a job for you. Young people today are competing in an international market, and you have to be able to compete at that level. So let's stop, let's stop selling ourselves short, young folks, and, and let's go out and compete at a high level. Many of them are, you know, I'm not going to say all of our young folks aren't, but for those that are not, you know, bear in mind, there are some sharp young people. I, I took a resume from a gentleman who was working on his MBA in, in the Yale School of Business. He was 25 years old, he had, he was attending Yale on a full scholarship, so that's an accomplishment in and of itself, with as competitive as that whole process is, he was attending on a full scholarship. is, he was, he was attending on a full scholarship and he's twenty-five years old, he had already written two white papers and, uh, completed three research proj, projects of significance. And I'm, I'm not smart enough to really give it its due, but, I mean, very impressive young man and people in that building were fighting over him. That's what you want, young people, that's what we want. That, that's what we want for our young people. You know, I'll move on to, you know, we were talking about Mike and his contribution on the, uh, industrial side. Um, you know, we've got Krispy Kreme that's opened its doors, uh, there are pictures, uh, that are out on the Gaston Times website that speak to the, uh, level of excitement. You know, my, that, I've got the Krispy Kreme app on my phone and then the hot light's been on all morning, so, uh, this is something we ought to be excited about. Um, so please go out and support, uh, they're actually having their ribbon cutting and grant opening on Wednesday, I believe it is, so, uh, so please go out and support that event as well. And, uh, I guess lastly, I would, uh, I'll, I'll take the opportunity to recognize Jenny. Our future looks bright with Jenny over there. I mean, we're not trying to run Iva off yet, but, but, uh, but she did a great job, we appreciate you, we do appreciate you. And I, I'll just, I'll throw this out there, this is probably not the thing I wanted to end with, but I just want to, you know, I, I like to, I like to talk with data, I like, and I like to share data. Blue Cross Blue Shield, um, this year, uh, based on, and again, it's based on the information that I know, across their book of business, uh, has, uh, is passing on an escalation, healthcare escalation of about eight percent, uh, to, to essentially everybody on its book of business. Um, and so, so the seven point six that we are, are realizing as a city, um, is, is not out of line with what's happening to everybody else, okay? So, so I, you know, I, I want to dispel, you know, any rumors or any talk that, you know, what, what we're experiencing, um, is, is some, somewhat, you know, out of line. Now, now again, I will, I will say this, we, we have an opportunity to manage how we'll, how we'll absorb and how we'll manage that increase, but, uh, but again, that is very consistent, that seven point six is very consistent with what, what everybody else is experiencing, so, um, you know, don't be fooled or duped into thinking that, uh, what we're, what we're experiencing is somewhat out of line. And I do want to take the time, uh, for the second week in a row, do want to recognize Dr. Lavender. We must have done something right, because she's come back again, so we do, we do appreciate her being here and, uh, that means a lot, thank you. Is there anything else?
We adjourn.
All right. Okay, we adjourn.